Hi, I'm DV LeBron with the Ellis Talkers Show. Today I have a very special guest. I have Mr. Ed Gardner on who's running for Milothean City Council, place five. How are you doing, sir?
Doing great, DV. How are you today?
I'm good. I'm good. I, you know, trying to get this, uh, this campaign season. I mean, it's been busy. Lot of candidates and I have shows coming on and, and now you go ahead and you put yourself on the, on the chopping block again.
Yeah, my neck is out there, round two.
So there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of new people here, you know, even since when you ran. So I want you to go ahead and kind of introduce yourselves to the voters of Milothean.
Well, hi. Welcome everybody who just came to our beautiful city. You know, it's a, it's a wonderful place. We came here about 18 years ago. Uh, my wife and I looking for a place to settle and stumbled upon Milothean, absolutely fell in love. Uh, at the time I was working for corporate America, spent, uh, you know, 20 years in IT security. Uh, we ended up finding a wonderful home out in the, uh, the wilderness of Milothean. Out in, out in the backwaters of Skinner Road, which is where we're still today. Uh, we've had two beautiful daughters, which are now in junior high and high school here. And, uh, we've, uh, really made this place, uh, made this place our forever home. So, uh, you know, I've, uh, got a long background in IT security, business, corporate, uh, spent a lot of time traveling the world, sitting in boardrooms, you know, working with governments, uh, large entities. I had a team of, of close to 500 employees in my last go around. I finally retired from all that and I started my own business in Milothean, which I currently do to this day. And, uh, I don't just really enjoy it here. I've finally gotten my business to the point where I feel like I have the time to be able to, to run for office and give back to my community. So that's why I'm running and why I'm here. So I don't know.
You know, it's, it's, um, and I tell every candidate this, thank you for wanting to serve your community. And you know, it isn't the first time you serve your community because you're, you like me are a fellow Navy vet. And, um, thank you for your service there. But you know, wanting, wanting to serve your community. That, that is a, you know, that is a big thing and put yourself up, you know, to be ridiculed, questioned, and everything that happens to our local, you know, our local leaders. They have to go through the grinder. So why did you, why did you want to do this again?
Well, I mean, for the same reason I wanted to do it last time. I, I just, I'm compelled to serve. I, I've always been that way. That's, you know, you brought up my Navy service. That's why I joined the Navy. Why, you know, I, I served as a police officer back in Oregon years ago, uh, before I ended up going to college. Um, you know, I've just always had that service mentality. It's something I've always wanted to do. I want to be part of it. Now, a big part of running for this office and, and why I'm doing it now is that there's a lot of decisions being made right now that are going to impact Milothean for many years to come. I mean, we're looking at, right now, you know, the decisions that were made five, 10 years ago, those are, those are the, all these new, you know, housing developments that are being built. Those are the new, uh, infrastructure that's being put in. All those decisions were made a long time ago. Now, we're, we're getting into a spot, spot where the decisions that are made in probably the next five or 10 years are going to decide what's built out with the rest of Milothean. And it's really important. So because of that, I feel like it's, it's extremely important that somebody's in there that has got the, the needs of the people in mind. Somebody's going to be there to represent, you know, the just average citizens like myself, rather than, you know, somebody who's, uh, in there to either one, find opportunities for themselves or to run for another office. I mean, a lot, there's a lot of reasons why people will run for city government. I'm doing it just because I care about my city. That's it.
Right. And then that's admirable. Now, um, you know, as, as you were mentioning, there's a lot of stuff coming down the, the pipe. So I wanted to know, before we get into the issues, I wanted to know, what is the role, the proper role of the city council in the lives of the people of Milothean?
I mean, the main reason for a city council is to have elected representatives that are there to, uh, to make sure that the government is operating in the behalf, uh, on the best behalf of the citizens. And that the taxes that are collected are being spent for the citizens that are going towards the infrastructure needs. They're going towards, uh, you know, going towards programs and projects that are there to make the lives better for the people that live here. And so, you know, city council, that's primarily what they do. You know, they sit and they, they do decide ordinances that, you know, will affect whether or not, you know, you could walk your dog on the, on the sidewalk on a Tuesday. I mean, those kinds of silly, silly ordinances. But the main thing that they do is they decide how the city is going to be built out and how it's going to move forward. They decide what's important for the city to spend money on it. What's, what it's not. You know, so those are the decisions that need to be, they need somebody who's watching it from the citizen's point of view. And that's why we have those elected officials. As the city can run, I mean, we've got great professionals in our, our city government, uh, that can handle all of these problems. But the thing is, is whenever you have a system that's designed to govern itself, you end up having, having, uh, decisions made in a bubble, you know? So by having elected officials, you're picking people out of the community that are surrounded by their neighbors, that, that are going to basketball games, that they're part of the community. You know, their, their kids are in, in all the sports there, at the, going to the community parks, and they know what's going on in their town. They're part of the town. They're not just an employee who goes to work and punches the clock. And a lot of our employees, you know, the city employees are citizens as well, which, you know, is, is a wonderful thing. But you need to have that differentiation. And that's what the city council provides.
And that does. So, you know, there, the, one of the things that, that you briefly touched on was the decisions that were made prior. And, you know, there are, there are a lot of, there's a lot of growth. It's 190% I think it was since 2010. It's some, you know, and forgive me if the number's a little bit off, but I was reading.
It's growing daily.
And it's growing. Uh, the percentage was down as of the last budget of, of permits that had been come, had come up, but we're still growing like crazy. And you can see it. Um, what, you know, people talk about the growth and the, the roads and the congestion and stuff like that. And we're going to get into that. So I wanted to know, if you are elected city council, what are some of the things you'd like to see in the way that the city of Milothean manages growth?
Well, I mean, one of the things that I, I'm against is, is extreme high density. You know, some of these, some of the communities, you know, to our north have huge tracts of high, you know, high density, just tons of small apartments packed in on each other. And, you know, they do it for various reasons, uh, you know? But in Milothean, I don't think that that fits. You know, what I want to see is, I want to see us build out towards our, our comprehensive plan that has been in place for many years in Milothean. I want to see us, you know, build a, a strong, healthy economic downtown, you know, that, that feeds and takes care of all the residents that, uh, that are there. I want to make sure that we're focusing on building out our current infrastructure before we go out and add, you know, additional, additional residents and bring in more rooftops. Uh, I want to see that, that the maintenance is maintained and, and just want to make sure that the city is, is going in the right direction, I guess. I mean, that's the easiest way to say it, but pretty simplistic.
Well, I mean, it, there's, there's concerns on how it grows. Uh, some of the things that I've heard, you know, in doing these interviews with different politicians around the county is that they want us, they want their, you know, in Waukesha Hatchie, they said they'd like it to be a place where you can, um, live, you can work, and you can play. And, you know, I, I've talked to other people in Milothean and they've kind of, you know, liked that vision of it. So is that a vision that you share? And, 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 and can you talk about that?
Well, I mean, you know, a lot of people talk about that, you know, because they say they want to have these defined, you know, downtown entertainment districts. They want to have, you know, a really defined industrial complex. They want to have their, you know, their, their neighborhood residential and then, you know, their light shopping and things like that, you know, more restaurants. When, when I look at it, you know, that's not really what Milothean is. I mean, there's a lot of cities around the metroplex that already are designed that way. And this has always typically been more of a bedroom community. You know, we do have a lot of wonderful, small, you know, local businesses that are, that, that I would love to see be able to stay here. Unfortunately, we're starting to lose some of those because of the high cost of doing business in this town. But, uh, you know, I look at the, the overall growth as a little bit of a problem rather than, you know, a solution. And I, you know, I, I see a lot of opportunities for doing some of that entertainment, you know, having that, that walkable, walkable downtown. That's great. You know, if you want to go downtown and be able to walk around to different restaurants and maybe have some, some, uh, entertainment venues down there, that'd be great. I'd love to see the local community go down there and be able to open those businesses and to have, you know, maybe a pool hall or something fun, you know, a mini golf place downtown or something like that. But the, the reality of it is, is that we've already priced ourselves out of a lot of that. You know, there's not a lot of that that can come into our downtown area because our prices are too high. So, you know, I would love to encourage it. I don't see it as being realistic, you know?
Yeah.
Not, not without taxes going up in our town and, and that I definitely don't want to.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss taxes, but you know, you're, you're touching on the business aspect of it. So as a businessman, and you do have a business that you run, I, I wanted to ask you, what are some of the impediments that you'd like to see change? Or maybe some of the things that you see as a businessman that's, um, that's, that the city could do better? And then on, on a jump of that, because I asked Mr. Rogers this, will your business have any connection with the city if you were elected?
No, and in fact, I actually moved my business out of Milothean because I couldn't afford it. You know, it was too expensive. My, my business is now down in Maple, which is a much cheaper place to buy property. I couldn't afford to, to have the facility that I have. I couldn't afford to have it here in Milothean. So, um, you know, and that's something that I see when I'm talking to other business owners, especially those that are leasing their properties. I've heard that leasing, lease rates are going up dramatically around Milothean. That's putting a lot of people out of business. So, you know, that's, that's a huge impediment to business. If you can't afford to pay your monthly bills, you know, you can't survive. You know, these, these small businesses, they're, they're not making, you know, tons of money. They're making just enough to, to pay the rent and, and keep the electricity on and maybe a little bit left over for groceries and taking care of their family at the end of the month. You know, they're paying their payroll and making sure that their employees have what they need. And, you know, at the end of the year, they probably don't make any profit at all. I mean, that's the majority of small business. And so when you have an unexpected cost, you know, lease rates go way up, it's, it's a huge problem for these businesses.
Yeah.
Um, so we need to look at, you know, what are the causes of this and how, how do we stop it? You know, how, how do we, how do we stabilize on this? Because the only other option is that everybody raises their prices. Now, we can't afford to even shop in our own stores. We can't afford to eat at the restaurants here. So, you know, it's, it's not, that's not healthy. You know, the other option, the only other option from a city standpoint is taxes. How do we decrease taxes so the cost of doing business and the cost to the people living here is low enough that they can actually afford to, to live and eat and shop here? So.
So, and, and, you know, I'm glad you mentioned taxes because taxes is a major structural issue going on in Texas. Um, there are some serious stuff going on in Austin. There's, uh, you know, a lot of people are being taxed to death. And I understand that, well, that may be a little bit of hyperbole, but people say they're being taxed out of their homes. So with, 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 with these taxes, you know, they, they're talking about in Austin, the, the city, the city is the, uh, the middle part of the taxes. The, the school is the largest chunk of your property taxes comes from the school. And I will have them on and we're going to talk about the bond and that kind of stuff. But the city does play a role in this, in, in the, uh, taxes of the city, citizens of Milothean. Um, one of the things that were mentioned during the, and I was watching the taxing, one of the things that were mentioned about taxes was, uh, a no new revenue rate. There was a drop from what they had, uh, projected, you know, what they wanted to do. They brought it down to 65. They brought the rate down. So there was some movement on tax and stuff. And then the city of Waukesha Hatchie did something innovative. They did a, an exemption, like a homestead kind of exemption thing on taxes, on property taxes. Is that something you can support? And what is your, your ideas on property taxes going forward?
Well, I mean, property taxes have become ridiculous in Texas. I mean, that is, that is probably the number one problem for everybody in this entire state. And, you know, the, the issue comes from the way that we tax homeowners and we tax property owners. That's by assessing the hypothetical sales value of your, of your property. It's not based on, on any factual, you know, or solid number. It's, it's, we think that you could sell your house for this money, so therefore we're going to tax you at that rate. And, and as they assume that they can sell your home for more money, they tax you for more. I mean, I'm to the point now where I bought my home, you know, 20 years ago. I'm still paying the same mortgage that I started paying back then, a 30-year fixed mortgage. And now the percentage of my, my monthly bills is that I'm paying more in taxes than I do on my, my mortgage. I'm paying more for my property tax than I pay for my home. And so, you know, that, that is a, that's an enormous problem. You know, the, the real way to fix it is we've got to get the assessment issue fixed. Now, from a city standpoint, what can we do? We still have to have revenue coming in in order to be able to operate the city. But, you know, there are ways of doing it. You know, the, the no new revenue is an, an idea, you know, that, uh, I think is, is valid. Because as you, well, I, I did, actually, I'm going to take that back. I don't think no new revenue. I think that no increase in taxes is a valid way of doing that. By doing that, by basically doing an inverse, uh, relationship between the rate and, and the assessed value, you can keep people from having their actual taxable dollars increase. Now, that doesn't say no new revenue for the city because the city's still going to be growing. We're still going to have more rooftops. As we have more rooftops, there's going to be more revenue for the city because there's going to be more houses, more people paying that percentage. But the, what it's going to do is the people that are already here, you know, as your taxable rates go up, you know, we can decrease the, the revenue percentage that we're taking from them so that it balances out, so that you're not being taxed out of your homes. And it's, it's ridiculous that I pay a property tax that's higher than what I'm paying the bank to live in my home. And that's, that's, it's unacceptable. Something has to be done.
That is, that is a tough thing, a tough pill to swallow when, when your taxes are higher than your mortgage. That, that's a tough one. So, you know, there are people, and I'm a paid devil's advocate. There's people that say, well, you know, this is a growing city and there's things that are needed and there's things that they're asking for. And people are, uh, passed a bond on a rec center and those things need to happen. Um, how do you do that? Keep the taxes in check and be a good steward to the, the money of the people of Milothean?
Well, as I said, you know, as, as we have new, new properties, new homes coming in, we have additional revenue because each of these are going to pay a percentage of property tax. We also have businesses coming in. Look at, at, you know, the, the large businesses and that have come into Milothean. We have the, the, you know, Milothean Business Park out there off of 67 that's, that's now, I think, full. Um, you know, the airport is looking at, at a massive expansion and additional businesses coming in out there. All of these are going to pay, um, a, a large percentage in not only property tax, but also in sales tax and revenues that'll get paid to the city. So there's, you know, through economic growth and through additional properties, we're going to definitely see the ability to continue maintaining our, our infrastructure and, and providing those services that are, are required and, and needed by the citizens.
Right. And, and there are a lot of things that are requested by the citizens. And then there's, there's tax issues. Sometimes the things don't jive together, but, you know, and the gist of it is that there's, there's some structural problems that definitely need to be addressed. So, you know, we talked about taxes and we talked about growth. I wanted to talk about these municipal utility districts. This is something that's kind of the buzzword. It's been happening a lot lately. It's popping up and I don't know much about them. So I was going to go ahead and let you kind of talk about them.
Well, you know, the, they call them MUDs, you know, municipal, uh, utility districts are, are, well, they started being really common down in the Houston area and they're kind of, I think that that's where the majority of them started. And now it's spread out and it's, uh, all over the state. But basically what they are, is there a similar entity like a school district, um, you know, or a county? Kind of like a county. They're more like a school district, basically, where, where they provide a geographical area by, that runs itself. And generally, these are created by, you know, a group of lawyers or developers get together and they, they petition the state to create a MUD. And then they, you know, for a, some parcels of land, you know, they might buy up 50, 100 acres and, or more and build a, a MUD where they provide water and electricity and the basic services. And they operate somewhat like a city, but without the city oversight. Generally, what ends up happening is, you know, the, the people that are there will pay the, in their taxes, an additional tax beyond the other normal taxes that go towards the, the municipal utility district. And then after, you know, 30 years, it's supposed to be paid off and the people just then, you know, pay for their normal services. Um, but generally, what ends up happening is they end up getting annexed or they merge with cities. And then the citizens, basically of the city, end up having to shoulder the cost of those. So, you know, there's a lot of controversy over them. You know, in some situations, they make sense, but in most, they're, they just seem to be a bad idea for me. I mean, the problem is, is what you've got is you've got a group of, of developers deciding what's happening in a county or in a, or in the outskirts of a city and how that, that land is going to grow without any feedback or control of the county or the city involved. So, you know, essentially you can end up in a situation like what happened in, say, Katy, Texas, where you had a really small town similar to what Milothean was, that now has one of the largest housing developments in history, which is the Cinco Ranch development, you know, surrounding Katy, Texas. And it's just this enormous, uh, thing that's run kind of like an HOA where they have their, their own control and governance and not really controlled at all by the county or the city. And it's, it's generally not a great thing for the people that live there, you know? But, uh, it, it does provide a mechanism for growth. But, uh, I would much rather see that mechanism of growth be going through now the, the normal channels.
Okay, okay. Well, I could see how, um, I guess that, you know, they, they can raise revenue and they could do things without, you know, needing to get.
Sell bonds.
Yeah, they could sell bonds without.
You can get, in fact, there was a, there was a really interesting one where two guys bought up, I think it was 40 some odd acres and they sold, I think, uh, or they, they got approval for $180 million in bonds. Sold $42 million in bonds for, I think, I think there, it was like 42 homes.
Wow.
I know. And so they, they went out and they, they secured all this money and then they ended up, you know, when it came to the, the, they essentially got absorbed by the local municipality, which ended up shouldering the burden of those bonds.
Oh my God, that is horrible.
Yeah, it was, I mean, there's, there's some real abuse cases that are out there for this.
That, that's real dirty.
And the, the problem, well, it's, it's not that it's, not only is it a chance for something dirty to happen, it's a chance for something that is done with, without any oversight or any of the surrounding community's input.
Right.
So, yeah.
So I wanted to talk to you about, uh, infrastructure, since we kind of touched on that. Um, you know, roads, there's, unfortunately, there's a lot of state roads and with text dot, things could get quite difficult. But you know, that you want to grow and, and then, you know, there's the project on, and 1387 is, is a text dot road. But there's a project on 1387 where they're going to, this south option, where they're talking about cutting through people's homes. And, and these are people that, these are citizens of Milothean. They're going to affect, you know, they're going to cut your property and.
I know, I know some of those folks.
So there's a lot of things going on there with roads. And, and, and I know that, and, and, you know, I know that we are, every city is running kind of a, a deficit when it comes to how many, how much is needed for the roads compared to what they have for the roads. So, um, you know, if you're elected council, what would you like to see done when it comes to the roads and the road funds?
Well, I mean, one of the things that I, I don't think happens enough right now, and I would definitely make sure it happens. I would be part of it, pushing it very hard, is to have more communication between text dot and the city. In other words, you know, we've got, uh, 663, we've got, you know, 875, we have, uh, 1387. You know, all of these text dot roads, we don't control. We don't control growth on those, whether or not they're coming in and widening the roads or, or providing the infrastructure, even, you know, how well they're maintained. And this is done by text doc. We don't control it. 287 is, of course, you know, that's text doc. And they're talking about going and just closing off, uh, exits off of 287 and, and turnoffs in, in 287. And it's actually happening. And, you know, this is something where the city had some input. They, they, they got to voice their concerns, but ultimately text doc made those decisions. You know, I, what I would like to see is a lot more, uh, interaction between not only text doc, but also our state representatives going, going to, uh, you know, Bob Hall and, and going to Brian Harrison and going to those and saying, hey, you know, how can we get funding in order to provide for, for the growth on our infrastructure through text doc for the roads that we need because of what's happening? I mean, now you look at this, this giant, uh, housing development that's going to go in on 875. Those people are going to be driving up 663, which isn't going to grow. That's going to be a, an absolute nightmare for traffic. It's going to be awful. You know, the, the south option you're talking about on 13, uh,
Yeah, 1387.
1387, sorry. Just absolutely had a brain, brain freeze there.
It happens.
Yeah. I mean, one option, going the north option trims off a little bit of, of a bunch of people's yards. Going the south option cuts right through a whole bunch of, I mean, literally is taking a bunch of land off of people and it's, it's changing the, the whole water flow and all the, the drainage in that area. So, I mean, it's, I think one of them's a much smaller impact to a lot of people. But, you know, you don't get that decision. That's not a decision that we get to make. So we need to have stronger interconnection with, with text doc. We need to be working with them on, on a, at least a weekly basis, if not a daily basis, to make sure that the planning that we're taking, that, that is going on with the city in terms of our growth is in sync with what they're doing on those, these roads that we don't have control over.
Yeah. And it is a, definitely fighting with the state can be interesting, but we do have these representatives that represent us up in Austin and, and.
That's, that's what they're there for.
We can talk to them, definitely can talk to them. So, yeah, unfortunately, I'm running out of time. But I wanted to ask you about, you know, the, the cities are going through our little, you know, or Milothean is going through the same little problems that a lot of other cities are coming, are going through with, with, you know, fentanyl starting to show up with these different drugs. And talking with Chief Smith, when I talked to Chief Smith, um, there was some upgrades that he needed on the budget, uh, last year. And there's probably going to be some stuff he needs to, um, um, and they, they have the new, uh, police center being built and it, they have a lot of good stuff coming, but they're going to need support. Um, what is your stance on supporting the, the Milothean PD?
Well, I mean, the, the police department, fire department are, are the two most important services that the city offers, period. Now, on top of that, you know, you look at, at what they do and what they provide, you know, the, just the basic safety and security for our community. You know, law enforcement is, is the most important. Fire is, when you have a fire, there's nothing more important. When you have an accident, you know, they're, they're there. But on a daily basis, the, the police department is there for us. And, and we absolutely have to have them. We have to have not only their response, but their presence in our community to keep out that influence and, and those drugs that we're talking about. You know, fentanyl is a huge problem. I don't want to see drug, you know, a major drug epidemic in our, in our community. I know that there are problems with drugs right now in our community. I hear about it, you know, even in our schools, we're having problems with drugs. I hear about it from my own kids. And so it's a problem, you know, we definitely have an issue. I would, I'm, I don't know how much more I can say I support the police department because, you know, I absolutely. Because, you know, I absolutely will make sure that they have what they need to do their jobs and that, that uh, they'll have what it takes to bring in the best people and to have the training that they need in order to uh provide that service to the community.
Well, this is the time in the show where you get to talk to the people of Milothean directly. I'm going to get out of the way and let you talk to them and why they should go for you.
Well, I mean, it's pretty easy. It's, it's very basic. I'm running to represent you. I'm running to represent the city and to provide a voice on the council for the average citizen. I'm going to be there as a representative who listens to everyone in the town and takes that and, and uses it for their benefit. I mean, I don't have any skin in the game in this, other than the fact that I live here too. You know, I'm, I'm doing this because I want to represent the interest of my neighbors, friends, the people I meet on the street every day. I want to see Midlothian become a, a place where we all, actually become. I, what, what I don't want to see it become is a place where we can't keep it the way it is right now, which is this wonderful welcoming uh community. I want to make sure that, that uh nothing changes in the sense that we end up having a community that we don't love. You know, right now, we all, everybody's flocking here because it's such a great place. Let's keep it that way. That's what I'm going to be doing is working every day to, to ensure that that happens and, and provide that uh, that sense of, of, I guess, overwatch for the issues and the problems that are facing you and your families. So, I guess, if, if I can say one thing, it's I need you to show up to the polls. I need you to come out and vote. I mean, I ran last time. I, it was, it was close, but the worst thing about it was we had an incredibly low turnout in Midlothian. Now, we're talking about a couple thousand people out of forty thousand people. We need more people to show up to the polls. We need more people to get involved. We need people to, to, to take the time out of their day and have their voices heard. I'm listening. Call me. If you have anything that you, you want me to address, call me. My numbers are on my, on my literature. My email's out there. I'm available and I want to represent you.
Well, you know, uh, thank you so much uh again for coming on and, and you're right, this turnout is not good and, and it, it does need to improve. Folks, you, you can't complain on, on Facebook and, and, and every other platform about the things going on in your city if you're not going to be involved in it. Um, whether, no matter how you think of it and how you see it, um, you have to be involved. You have to be involved in your cities, whether those in Waukesha Hatchie that watch me or, or those in, in, you know, Red Oak or those in Milothean. You have to be involved or you, you really have nothing to say. Cause once the bulldozers showed up, um, a lot hap, a lot has happened. So, uh, guys, I wanted to tell you before I let you go, um, a- and if you could hold on uh till after the show, uh, Mr. Gardner, I'll talk to you in a minute. Guys, I, I just want to let you know, Facebook is making it really hard for me and I hate to complain about that, but they're, they're, uh, they're making it really tough. So, it's getting to the point where if I want you guys to even see me at all, I have to pay for it. I mean, even though you follow me, it's pretty much I have to pay for it. And, and that's unsustainable because this is something I do because I love my community. And it's not something I make money on. Um, I spend money on this. So I, I need your support. Um, I do, because I, I can't keep going if I don't have those likes and those algorithms going up. So, you know, I do appreciate you guys watching. I've appreciated your support and I want to keep going. I, I love doing this for my community. So uh, I need your support and I appreciate you. You take care.